It's Jay. Good morning. Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session. Today is Saturday, May 20, 2023. The time is 9:14 a.m. My name is Speaker William Low, and I call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Eddie Lindsay, Indian Community Church, to say this morning's invocation.
I want to take just a moment to thank you for allowing me to come to be with you today. Okay, and I did a privilege to be able to spend just a moment with you. In the Book of Exodus, the Bible speaks of the Ten Commandments, and we tend to draw away from the Ten Commandments because we think that it limits us in what we do. But one of the things God talks about is this. He talks about the power of decision-making. He says that sometimes when we make the wrong decisions, it takes God third and fourth generation in order to correct it. But when we make the right decisions, he says it goes on for a thousand generations of the blessings that God gives us. The Bible teaches us that decisions are very important, and some of the decisions that you make will affect me, and will affect my children, some will affect my great-grandchildren, and some will affect my children that have not been born yet. It's important that you make wise decisions, decisions that will pay dividends to our people, not only to my family, but to our families as a whole. Bible says, "Any man lacks wisdom in making good choices." It says, "Let him ask of God, who give us to all men liberally." See, God wants us to make good decisions, and that decisions that will help us, not only us, but to help our people. There's a young man that God put in great place of authority, and he prayed one day. He said, "He didn't know how to lead a people. He's going to become king." Asked God to give him wisdom and knowledge to be able to lead his great people. God honored that. God made him one of the greatest kings that ever lived. And I'm glad today that you're here where you are. I'm glad that the decisions you're going to make and choices that's going to be there. I pray that you'll have the wisdom to make right choices, right decisions. God bless you. May God be his grace. Mother, we thank you this morning. We thank you for allowing me to come, be able to stand before these leaders and representatives of our great nation. I pray that you'll help them, pray that you'll guide them, help them to understand the importance of all decisions that we make, pray that the choices that they make will be choices that you'll guide them through. Thank you for each one of them. Pray that you'll bless their homes, their families, and I pray that you'll guide them in each choice. Amen. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.
Madou, Pastor, for those great words. Next item on the agenda, roll call, National Council Secretary Alicia Strobel.
Speaker William Low.
Here.
Galen Cloud.
Lega.
Mary Crawford.
And again.
Joyce dear.
Present.
Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Sandra Golden.
Present.
Leonard Gouge.
Here.
Nelson Harjo.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Randall Hicks.
Present.
Robert Huf.
Present.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry. Nope, excused. Thomasine Yehola Osborne.
Present.
Harold Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Figure you have 15 present, zero absent, one excused.
Fifteen present, zero absent, one excused. That constitutes a quorum. Any business conducted this morning will be valid. On to approval of minutes. We have minutes from an emergency session, April 11, 2023, planning session, April 25, 2023, emergency session, April 26, 2023, pre-agenda quarterly session, April 29, 2023.
Speaker.
Yes, Representative Marshall.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes with any necessary changes on the emergency session, planning session, emergency session, and the pre-agenda and quarterly session.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to approve all aforementioned minutes. Is there a second? Seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, vote please.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Harold Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce dear?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Figure you have 14 in favor, zero against.
14 in favor, zero against. All aforementioned minutes were passed. At this time, before we get into other business, I would like to recognize and again introduce our royalty. This is their last council meeting as our princesses. So we have Miss Muskogee Nation, Tima Yarji. And Junior Miss Muskogee Nation, Shanoa Barnett. And ladies, I love putting people on the spot. Would you like to say something to the crowd about your reign and all the experiences you've had? Please.
It's Jay, Stone Gold, Tima Yarji, Georgia Philos, Bali Hakul, Hamgin Delag, Amajogados, Um, Lega, Ejolidos, Jaski, Gail Yarji, Jobosoggi, Tarfi Yarji Dai, Momen, Amy Yarji Dos, Oktaha Hachi, I'm Jogodak Dos, Momen, Imasoswa, Alabama, Jogodak Dos, Summerville State College, Despoilat, Baycombe College, Aydos Hiwa, Madou. Hello, how are you? My name is Tima Yarji. I'm your 2022, 2023 Miss Muskogee Creek Nation. I'm 21 years old, and I'm from the Deer Clan. My mom is Gail Yarji. My grandparents are like Tarfi Yarji and Amy Yarji. My ceremonial ground is Sand Creek, and my granddaughter, Alabama, is ceremonial ground. I graduate from Summerville State College. I'm currently attending Baycombe College. This is my last introduction for my reign, and I just wanted to say that I have learned a lot throughout my reign. I've learned, I've gained a lot of experience. I've learned things from the, you know, intertribal meeting. I've learned more about the culture of our Muskogee people, and I've learned so many great things that I will keep with me to when I go and pursue more things in the future. But I, I, in my reign, I, I actually got in the Alpha Chi National Honor Society, and I'm also in the Indian Education Honor Society in my reign. And so I just want to, if there's young people out in here, I just want to encourage them to get their education. I'm currently a big, I'm currently a student at Baycombe College, and I'm a senior for my bachelor's degree. And so I just want to encourage all the kids to, and younger people, to go and pursue and to make, to do good things in their lives where they can help people and where they can use their talents or whatever, whatever their, like their knowledge, maybe from their cultural, or anything that they want to go and just have faith in themselves, believe in themselves, and also know that if you just keep going with hard work and with hard work, that they can, I believe that they can succeed in whatever they pursue. Thank you, Madou.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
It's Jay, Stone Gold, Shanoa Barnett, Georgia Philos, Wodgogi, Amalega Dos, Valen Chinmogagan, Amajogados, Amadua Niakaos. Hello, how are you all? My name is Shanoa Barnett. I am the 2022, 2023 Junior Miss Muskogee Creek Nation. I come from the Raccoon Clan, and I'm 18 years old, and my tribal town is Niaka. I just want to say, Madou, for allowing me to speak to you all today. This is my last National Council meeting as your junior miss for the 2022, 2023 year. I've definitely learned a lot. I've met a lot of people, and this whole experience as junior miss has led me to my future calling as an Indian education teacher, you know, speaking to non-Muskogee people, non-natives in general, and also some of our Muskogee people, has really, you know, allowed me to show them how much I know about our Muskogee Nation and how proud I am of it and all of that you do. So I just want to thank you all for your support and kindness on this journey, and I hope to see you all. Madou, thank you.
Thank you. Ladies, I just want to say thank you all very much for representing this in the way you did. I would like to open it up to the council. Would you like to say any words of encouragement as they move on to their next venture? Anyone at all? If they're knowledgeable. Yes, sir. Representative Randolph.
Thank you, Speaker. I'd just like to say, ladies, you've done a great job. Miss Bear, also, thank you for doing everything for them, taking them around. You've been a great representation for us, and I know you're going to do great things. So just keep moving forward, and God bless you. Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, Second Speaker.
Yes, I want to say thank you for your service to the nation, and we appreciate what you've done for us. Thank you, representing us. Madou.
Representative Harjo.
I do like to thank you. It was always nice when we went out and were at different places to be able to see you ladies moving around, and we could see that you were out there visiting and talking and sharing with the different people from the different states and everything. And, you know, it just makes us happy to know that we have our royalty there with us, and you guys made us really look good a lot of times, and we thank you for that. Madou.
Representative Marshall.
Yes. I appreciate your service to the nation, and it was always great, like, like's been said before, to have you out representing us. And I also know that you did this as a great sacrifice, as we all do, and I just wish you well, and God bless you in the days to come. Thank you.
Representative Crawford.
I'd like to also say thank you for your service in representing our Muskogee Creek Nation. I've got lots of well words about you guys when you go and represent our tribe, and they're always talking how nice you all look, your beautiful outfits. And I also wish you well in your next journey, and may God walk with you and bless you. Thank you.
Representative Deer.
Yes, I would just like to say, Madou, to both of you. You've both been beautiful ambassadors for our nation, and it's always good to see a welcoming face when we go somewhere. You've always been friendly and very cordial, so thank you, Madou.
Representative Randall Hicks.
Thank you, Speaker. Ladies, I just want to say thank you for your service, for representing the tribe, and it's been my honor to watch you mature throughout the year. I know when you first started speaking, you was very, very nervous, and now you're getting up there and you're just speaking. You're fluent, and it just shows your maturity. And ladies, just continue your education and be who you are. Thank you.
Representative Cloud.
[speaking Spanish] 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 [speaking Spanish]
Representative Proctor.
Just want to thank you for your representation to our nation. You did represent this very well, and God bless you in your next endeavors.
All right. Thank you, National Council. Greatly appreciate you. Ladies, again, thank you so much, Team of Gold Warriors. Love your choice in schools. All right, on to the order of business. TR 23-043, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, confirming the nomination of Leigh Ann Nix to serve on the Muskogee Creek Nation Citizenship Board. Sponsor, Representative Joyce Deere.
Speaker, I motion to adopt.
Representative Deer makes a motion to adopt. Seconded by Representative Crawford. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Excuse me, excuse me. My apologies. Roll call, vote please.
Joyce dear?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
No.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Harold Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Figure you have 13 in favor, one against.
13 in favor, one against. TR 23-043 is adopted. Leigh Ann, would you please like to stand up and be recognized? TR 23-044, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a transfer of control, NAPRA agreement for ancestors and funerary objects from Moundville Archaeological Site with the University of Alabama. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud. Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR 23-044 is adopted. TR 23-045, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending TR 19-076, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation to suspend all special appropriations and donations as amended by TR 20-150, TR 21-080, TR 22-128, TR 22-143, TR 22-150, TR 22-155, and TR 23-170. Sponsor, Representative Sandra Golden.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Sandra Golden makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR 23-045 is adopted. TR 23-046, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Muskogee Creek Nation, Alabama Crusade Tribal Town, Kayalegi Tribal Town, and Thaplatko Tribal Town for the method of allocation for the nation's proportional share of funding for housing and urban development funds and the FY 2024 Indian Housing Block Grant. Sponsor, Representative Charles McHenry.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion. Have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR 23-046 is adopted. TR 23-047, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a First Amendment through the memorandum of agreement among the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Charleston District, Federal Railroad Administration, or other U.S. Department of Transportation Agency, Almeida Railways Advisory Council on the Historic Preservation Muskogee Creek Nation and South Carolina State Historic Preservation Officer and the South Carolina State Ports Authority regarding the Navy Base Intermodal Facility Project in Charleston County, South Carolina. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud. Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR 23-047 is adopted. TR 23-048, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Housing Contract with Harris Contractors. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud. Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR 23-048 is adopted. TR 23-050, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a purchase-sale agreement for property located in Hughes County, Oklahoma. Sponsor, Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR 23-050 is adopted. TR 23-051, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to submit a grant application to the Internal Revenue Service for the benefit of the Office of the Secretary of the Nation. Sponsor is Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR 23-051 is adopted. NCA 23-030, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation establishing a new law entitled, entitled 35, Chapter 13, Subchapter 2, entitled Tribal Grave House Assistant Program. Sponsor, Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Leonard Gouge. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, vote please.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Harold Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce dear?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Figure you have 14 in favor, zero against.
14 in favor, zero against. NCA 23-030 is adopted. NCA 23-031, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending MCNA Title 35, Chapter 6, entitled School Clothing Program. Sponsor, Second Speaker, Robert Huf.
Motion adopt.
Second Speaker, Robert Huf, makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomasine Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, vote please.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Harold Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce dear?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Figure you have 14 in favor, zero against.
14 in favor, zero against. NCA 23-031 is adopted. NCA 23-033, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing a donation to Ucan, Inc., for the Okema Summer Kids Cafe. Sponsors are Representative Sandra Golden and Representative Randall Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Sandra Golden makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion?
Speaker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Strickland is here. He was unable to attend the HEW meeting due to a funeral for one of the children at the school because he's the principal there. But he is here today, and I understand that there was a question for him. So if you would like, he can come to the mic and answer the questions that someone had.
Yes, Mr. Strickland, come on down, sir. Podium. Let's ensure the green light is on. Yes, sir, right there in front of you. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good, good. Thank you for being here. Do we have a question? Anyone have a question? What do you want to?
As Speaker, I do.
Yes.
Sir, this is past. Where would our money go? Does it go into a potter? Does it need to certainly vent at this?
That's a great question. So this money is specifically used for technology for our students, and it will also be used for a, for a performer who comes in, Mr. Will Hill. Perhaps you know Mr. Hill with Mahinawados. And so he comes in every other year. He's a Creek citizen, and he has performed around the world. He's a storyteller, a performer, and just, but we love having him every other year. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Strickland, I just wanted to welcome you and convey our condolences.
Very much.
No more questions? Thank you, sir. We greatly appreciate you for being here today. Any last chants, comments, questions? Roll call, vote please.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Harold Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce dear?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Figure you have 14 in favor, zero against.
14 in favor, zero against. NCA 23-033 is adopted. NCA 23-034, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing a budget modification in excess of 10% for the Muskogee Creek Nation Realty Trust Department FY 2023 Budget. Sponsor, Representative Charles McHenry.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, vote please.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce dear?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. NCA 23-034 is adopted. NCA 23-035, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending NCA 23-013, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing a supplemental appropriation for the Muskogee Creek Nation Risk Management Arbor Care Services Fiscal Year 2023. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud. Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Harjo. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Deere?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. NCA 23-035 is adopted. NCA 23-039, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, appropriating funds to be used towards the purchase of property located in Hughes County, Oklahoma. Sponsor, Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Thomas Senior Hola Osborne. Discussion, do we have any discussion? I will say the funding source is economic development and land acquisition for this legislation. Roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Alan Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Deere?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. NCA 23-039 is adopted. NCA 23-040, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Tribal Workforce Vocational Training Program to be administered by the Muskogee Creek Nation Employment and Training for Fiscal Year 2023. Sponsor, Representative Joyce Deere.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joyce Deere makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mary Crawford. Discussion, do we have any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Joyce Deere?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Alan Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. NCA 23-040 is adopted. Last item on the agenda, NCA 23-042, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of fiscal relief funding for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Community and Human Services Department. Sponsor, second speaker, Robert Huf.
Motion adopt.
Second speaker, Robert Huf, makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion.
Speaker, I'd like to give Zachary Harjo some time, please.
Oh, Zachariah, are you on the line, sir?
Shay, yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Speaker. Uh, I apologize, I was unable to attend in person today. I just wanted to add some context and clarity. Um, so the reason why this, uh, we requested that this legislation be postponed was that, um, after speaking with, uh, the Disability and Developmental Office, um, they didn't have the staff, uh, necessary to implement this award, um, and so there will be subsequent legislation, uh, to add some staffing, uh, costs and support, uh, to help them implement, implement, uh, the grant funding essentially to the disabled Muskogee citizens that this would impact and benefit. Um, so we were just trying to clarify the budget to make sure that they had the budgetary and staffing support they need to even, uh, roll out the funds, and so that will be following, I believe, uh, shortly or in the month of June.
All right, thank you, sir. Representatives?
Madou.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Zachariah Harjo? Any at all? Roll call vote, please.
Robert Huf?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Alan Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Deere?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Oh.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Speaker, you have thirteen in favor, one against.
Thirteen in favor, one against. NCA 23-042 is adopted. That concludes the order of business. Other business, do we have any other business, council representatives? Announcements, do we have any announcements? Representative Hicks?
Thank you, Speaker. Uh, Realty Department will be conducting an outreach at Cromwell Indian Community on May 22nd, 2023, 6:30 PM, and at Wetumka Indian Community on June 8th, 2023, at 6:30. The outreach will consist of the Oklahoma Indian Legal Services and Will's Clinic for any interested tribal citizens.
Outstanding.
And also, Speaker, not to put Erin Salzman on the spot, but I just want to say thank you. Uh, I had a phone call about four, 4:30 yesterday from a citizen that needed some assistance, and Ms. Salzman was actually in a meeting, I think, but anyway, somehow, some way, she managed to get assistance for, the emergency assistance for the, for the citizens that needed it in a thirty-minute span, so I just wanted to personally say thank you for your services.
Thank you, Erin, we greatly appreciate you always. I know we really depend on you, so Madou, right? Do you have any other announcements? We'd like to say that I would want to wish my mother a happy birthday. She'd get on to me if I didn't say that today. Happy birthday, mama. Right? Any other announcements? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second speaker, Robert Huf, makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Representative Harjo. I'd like to ask Representative Amen. Madou, Representative Hicks, we are adjourned at 9:53 AM. Please get home safe. Madou.